Okay, you're filming. We'll keep it on Dr. Glasspool's screen.
That was cool.
I'm obviously keeping it down, yeah?
Is it the time in the entire thing?
Yeah. Yeah, well, no, we're not. We're finishing.
Okay, it's seven o'clock.
I'd like to call the April 30th, 2013, uh, school board meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Real call, please.
Mr. Calella?
Here.
Mr. Dowdell?
Here.
Mr. Drake?
Here.
Mr. McGuff?
Here.
Mr. McMasters?
Present.
Mr. St. Ledger?
Present.
Mr. Tom Morello?
Here.
Mrs. White?
Here.
Mr. Zucco?
Here.
Thank you. The board met an executive personnel session on April 23rd and this evening, April 30th, to discuss matters of personnel agenda and labor negotiation and student confidentiality.
I'm humming the monitors.
And I apologize if we're squinting at you, but we have two very large, high-intensity lights that are down on us.
Getting a hum, too.
So it's, it's hard for us to see out into the audience until they figure out how to turn those lights off.
Approval of minutes, recommend approval of following meeting minutes. March 26th, regular board meeting, April 2nd, finance budget workshop, April 9th, education committee and policy committee, April 16th, facility committee and special voting meeting, and the April 23rd, finance meeting.
So move.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we have some, uh, student features tonight. The first one, uh, will be on the Forbes Road Career and Technology Center recognition.
Good evening, everyone. I have the, uh, honor of serving on the Forbes Road, um, committee as, uh, as our Plum representative, and tonight, uh, Mr. Cassell is going to present some awards for the, for the kids who, uh, made the National Technical Honor Society.
Good evening. The mission of the National Technical Honor Society is to honor student achievement, leadership, promote educational excellence, award scholarships, and enhance career opportunities for NTHS membership. The vision is to be the international leader in providing recognition for excellence in career and techno- tech, excuse me, technical education. Forbes Road Career and Technology Center, of which we are a part here at Plum Borough, is a member of the National Technical Honor Society, and I am honored tonight to, um, recognize six of our students who are recently inducted into the National Technical Honor Society. First student is Edward Bell, who was inducted into the National Technical Honor Society for Information Technology and Gaming. Ed is a second-year recipient of the NTHS recognition. Second student is Cassie Devlin, who was also inducted in the National Technical Honor Society, and she was inducted for advertising design. Skylar Hill was inducted into the National Technical Honor Society for Computer Networking and Security. Skylar was also a sixth-place winner in networking concepts at the FBLA State Leadership Competitions recently. Emily Mogul was inducted into the National Technical Honor Society for Cosmetology. Haley Sullivan was inducted into the National Technical Honor Society for Automotive Technology. Haley is also a second-year recipient of NTHS recognition. And finally, it's my pleasure to introduce this evening to you, one of our students who was able to join us this evening, Haley Tiani, who is with, uh, with us and was inducted into the National Technical Honor Society for Health Science Technology. And we are very proud of all six of our students for their recent inductions, and I would like to give them a round of applause, please. I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize the accomplishments of two additional students attending the Forbes Road Career and Technology Center. Brett State participated in the Skills USA 2013 State Conference Competitions. Brett was a second-place winner for Industrial Motor Control and was a recipient of a $3,000 Pennsylvania College of Technology Scholarship recently. Also, Jake Roberts was a code designer of the winning design for the destructive driving day t-shirt. Jake has enrolled in the advertising design program at Forbes. Again, congratulations to all the accomplishments of all of our students attending the Forbes Road Career and Technology Center. I want to thank you and turn it back over to Mr. Sam Oger.
All right, thank you. Next, uh, we have, uh, the wrestling team and, uh, Coach Mike Soupek.
I'd like to thank the board for having us tonight. Uh, we had six wrestlers this year who, uh, made it to the WPL Regional Championships, and, uh, we'd like to recognize them here tonight. At 120 pounds was freshman Tommy Zumo. He had a record of 27 and 14. He's also a scholar athlete.
Thank you, Tommy.
At 138 pounds is Eric Green. He had a record of 26 and 12, and he was athletic honor roll. At 152 was Zach Martin. Zach was 25 and 14, and he was also athletic honor roll. At 182 is Nate Turcik. Nate finished 21 and 13, and he was scholar athlete. At 285 is Steven Turcik. Steven was 20 and 16. He's also a scholar athlete. One of our two seniors graduating this year is Jake DeGilio. Jake's headed to Waynesburg. He was 28 and 11, and he is also athletic honor roll.
Don't, don't let Jake get away. We have a tradition of the seniors telling us, uh, what their after-graduation plans are.
So, what do you guys want to know?
What are you gonna do when you graduate?
Well, uh, I'll be attending Waynesburg University to study criminal justice and play football and wrestle.
Good. Thank you.
Good luck.
And, uh, last, we have the bowling team, Cliff Kershorts.
Thanks for having me. Uh, I'm Cliff Kershorts, the head coach of the bowling team. Uh, it's my first year, uh, in coaching the team. My assistant is, uh, Jerry Yushinsky. We have more than a hundred, uh, bowling teams in the state of Pennsylvania, and they were all competing for 12 spots, uh, at states, and, uh, over 600 individual bowlers competing, competing for, uh, 24 individual spots at states. And, uh, my Plum team, uh, uh, made it, my boys' team made it to states and, um, did Plum proud for you. Uh, they, they placed in 10th place, uh, at states. The other tournaments that they were in, besides being in the northeast section, uh, placing first in the northeast section for both the boys and the girls, uh, the Whipple Tournament, uh, was the first one we entered. My girls finished in second place there, the boys in ninth place. Uh, both teams qualified for regionals. The boys finishing in fifth place allowing them to move on to states, and the girls finished in seventh place, missing, uh, to move on by 50 pins. And at the state championship, as I said, the boys finished in 10th place. Uh, I had one individual bowler that made it to states, and that was Talia Pillis. She's a freshman, and, uh, she should be extremely proud of herself. Anybody should for just making it there on an individual basis, but as a freshman, uh, she should be extremely proud of herself. So if I can bring up my boys' team, um, I'll just name the, the, to the, uh, the, the team. Uh, it was Matt Cosmac as a senior, uh, Cody Frisco as a junior, um, Josh Crisman is a sophomore, and Zach Matthews is a senior. Danny Yushinsky is a sophomore, and he had the high average for the team, uh, with a 214. Uh, Dalton Novak is a senior. Uh, he had the high game for the, uh, for the section with a 279 game, missing a perfect game by one strike. And Joshua Kershorts, my son, had the high series, uh, for the team with a 713 series. And for the girl's side, um, the girls were Alexis Nichols, a senior, uh, Bethany Liberto, a sophomore, Kristen Ankers, a sophomore, Ally Dick is a freshman, Heather Cosmac is a senior, Talia Pillis is a freshman, and Jocelyn Rubash, who is a senior graduating this year, she had the high, uh, game of 258, the high average for the, uh, team of a 190, and the high series of a 648, and she was our anchor and a solid bowler for the entire season. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Heather Cosmac, and after high school, I'll be attending the University of Pittsburgh at Greensburg to study either physical education or physical therapy.
Hey, so if there are any, uh, students that need to leave to, uh, go study or do homework, um, you're free, free to go at this time. We'll move on to citizen comments on agenda items. Any citizen comments on agenda items?
Uh, good evening. I don't know if this is on the agenda. I didn't get a copy of the agenda. I just walked in. But my name's Clem Barberino. I live at 18 Ridgman Court here in Plum Borough. About a year ago, there was discussion on the school board's part about, uh, the possible elimination of the Family and Consumer Science Program here, uh, at Plum Borough. At that time, I sent each of the school board members, I think, two emails talking about, I think, the merits of this program and why we need to keep this department here at this, uh, school. And now, recently, I see in the newspaper, there's discussion once again of a possible elimination of that department. And I could stand here and think of numerous reasons as to why I think, uh, we should keep this program, but, uh, two reasons come to mind right away when I think of it. One is financial. I understand that whenever you cut a program, at the time you cut a program, there's gonna be a financial savings, obviously. You won't have the teacher salaries, the expenses to maintain that program, so you're gonna have a savings. But if you look long-term, what is the vision of this school district? What is your vision of this, uh, program? What is the vision that you see five, 10 years down the road? And if your vision is five, 10 years down the road, I think financially, you're making a huge mistake if you cut this program. If we start cutting curriculum in this community, we become a basic school district where we're just offering the core curriculum. People are not gonna be buying houses, moving into this community if we're just a core curricular community. From what I understand, there's only one other school district, and it's East Allegheny, that does not offer this program. So what are we gonna become? Just like East Allegheny? Uh, if everybody else is be able to provide this program, why shouldn't we? And I think if we start cutting curriculum, we're gonna start cutting our tax bases, and people are gonna be moving out of here and going to other school districts where they're gonna be able to get the core curriculum classes, plus everything else that you're gonna cut out. I think it's gonna be a financial mistake on your part if you cut the program. The second big reason I think that the program needs to continue is if you look at what's the biggest job growth that's going on in this country today, it's in the health industry. And some of the very basic things that they're teaching in this program, the fundamentals of curriculum, the principles, is helping laying the foundation for these students to continue on to hopefully partake in that job growth that this, this country has in the health industry. So I think that we need to continue the program. I don't want to see this community go to where we're just offering core curriculum classes and nothing else, because if we're doing that, everybody's looking to be, nobody's gonna be moving into these houses and paying the bills, because we pay high enough taxes as it is, and if they're gonna, if we're just gonna be offering core curriculum classes, people aren't gonna be moving into this community. I think that, uh, that if we're gonna be the only, we're too good, and, and if everybody else could maintain all the curriculum, why can't Plum Borough? Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Rick Nowak. I live at 130 Nowak Drive. I am here tonight in support of these children that are all sitting in front here that have "I'm Worth It" on their t-shirts. I, uh, would like to take a little bit of time just to explain, my wife's in my position as far as to, to let you understand the growth of my son, who is a sophomore presently at BM, BCMC. In his eighth and ninth year in, in school, and he will come up here and tell his own story, but he was bullied. He was getting bullied in 10th grade. My wife and myself in no way would let, wanted him to do cyber school. We are both working parents. We knew he would not get an education doing cyber school. It was not until in his 10th year that finally, one of the guidance concerts had told my wife about BCMC. And we had gone to the school, we had seen the school, and my son has been in it for close to half of the year now. The difference in this boy is absolutely astonishing to my wife and myself. This was a young man, and they are young men and young women sitting here. We could not get him out of bed to go to school. He was constantly making excuses on why he couldn't go to school. He was getting into problems at the high school absolutely because he was being bullied and he needed out of the school to open up our eyes. This young man today gets up in the morning at 6 o'clock, doesn't fight us, goes to school, is carrying basically Cs right now for a child that was carrying Ds and S. He has one grade that he struggles in, which is English, that he is working on. But the turnaround in just a half of year, what these teachers have done over at BCMC is absolutely astounding to us, and you'll hear that in each and every one of these children's stories. I would hope you would please reevaluate what you're doing about taking that school away from these children. I seen in the paper that you, you, you had taken the 234, you know, $234,000 and realized if they all go to cyber school or charter school, you're gonna spend $157,000 on them. That's $77,000 that you're paying more to let these kids succeed without promoting this school, because there is not a person in the school district promoting this school. As you had a gentleman from Forbes here, this constantly be promoted, which is another great school and another great avenue for our children. But BCMC is not promoted within the school district whatsoever. If you listen to the parents, their kids were struggling so bad in cyber school or in, in high school that finally something was said to them. I also don't understand where the $157,000 came in, because I'm still looking at, and, and if my number is wrong, please, somebody tell me. But I'm also missing the $7,000 per child that you're going to, that's not, you're not going to get from the state on the subsidy of these children. That's $119,000 added to that, 257,000. Yo, that you are going to lose now for these children. So now you are spending more money on each and every one of these kids for a program that was designed for 45 children, but because this program has not been being promoted, naturally, you only are going to have 17 there this year. I beg you, I ask you as a parent to please reevaluate what you're doing. Give the school an opportunity. Work with the school. Promote the school. You're affecting not only these 17 children, you're, you are also affecting the children from Penn Hills and Gateway if you pull out. Those children are also going to lose that school. I really don't know if you'll answer questions, but my biggest question that I have is, have any school board members? I know Dr. Glasspool has been at BCMC, but has any school members been over to BCMC in the last two years to see what these teachers are doing with these kids, to see how they run the program? I've been there. I stop in. It's, they are very welcoming, and I cannot say the Plum, the, the, you know, the high school wasn't, and the junior high wasn't to my wife and myself. We worked very hard for a good education for my son. Does he have some problems? Absolutely. Yo, does he get lost in a big setting? Absolutely. That's what a lot of the children have. When you take them out of the big setting of 30-some kids in a classroom, and you put eight to 15 in a room, they're getting the one-on-one from these teachers. It's a blessing that the school board has, and you're ready to take it away from them. I would hope that you would, instead of just pouring this from underneath them, if you want to exit, give it an exit plan to exit from it, but don't, you know, you're, you're punishing these 17 students that are there for the next two years to graduate from BCMC. You are punishing them by taking this school away. It's, I, I, there are so many things that I could really talk about. I, I know one of the things was, you know, the Penn Hills last week brought 20 kids to, to BCMC. And promoting BCMC in their school. They brought 20 kids into the school for an open house. I also know that Plum was supposed to have it this Friday, and they pulled out of it. And this is apparently, you know, one of the problems, if we don't promote something, we're, it's going to go down the drain. It's like any product anybody would sell. If you don't promote your product, you're not gonna sell it. And it's, the, the school hasn't had the promotion and the backing from the Plum School Board or honestly, the Plum Schools. I think if you gave it a shot and you let the school work hand-in-hand with Mr. Patterson and his staff, I think you would see a drastic change. It would get that 45 students that are supposed to be in that school that we have slots for, and the cost would be $5,200 a student. $5,200 a student. You would be putting money back into the school district, not taking it away. The 70,000...
Excuse me, I do have to, we do have a five-minute general limit on public comments, and we do have a large number of people, so I'm gonna ask everybody to try to stay within the five minutes.
Absolutely. I'll end here. I actually was going to, and I hope you all know Plum's mission statement. I was going to read it, but in there, you have several things, and one of them is, "Every child has a right to a quality education in a safe, disciplined, student-centered environment." That's just one of the things, and you're taking that away from these children. A lot of these children, 50% of them, were being bullied. I don't believe that Plum actually is out to see any kids being bullied in this school, but I do believe that right now, this school board is bullying these kids, and this is my own opinion, to go back to an environment that they are not going to do well in. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dawn Lencheck. I live at 170 Dimwitty Drive. Um, I'm here tonight to talk about two things. One, um, that is of particular concern is, um, the comments made about the teachers' contract. I am upset. Uh, we have wonderful teachers here. Absolutely wonderful teachers who, um, spent countless hours and their own money educating our kids. And they're being villainized in newspaper. They're being talked about because of days they take off. Um, frankly, I think the problem is y'all outsource to Kelly's Services, which is actually costing our district money. You made a covenant agreement with the teachers, and that included benefits, and in that benefits, it included sick days. Now, those teachers are taking their sick days, which are allowed to them, and yet certain school board members are villainizing them for using their sick days. I find that troubling. It provides an adversarial environment. They are holding to their covenant agreement with you, and I believe that you as school board members need to do the same. Think you need to look at Kelly's Services. We have been outsourcing everything in this district to save a buck. Sometimes, you know, you have to spend money to get quality, and I believe our children are worth investing in, and I believe in investing in the personnel that most directly affects them. And on that note, um, the other thing I wanted to talk about was your, on the outnote, uh, on the note of outsourcing, um, we did a write-to-know, and your contract with Aramark started out at $112,229. This school year, it's now at $197,838. By 2014-15 school year, when the contract is up, that fee will be $205,831, and that's just for the contract. Part of, in addition to that, we are paying $74,177 for, um, in, uh, for supplies. I'm sorry, for supplies, we're paying $6,948 that we cannot account for. We asked for in the write-to-know, um, for an accounting of these supplies, and we can't get them. We can only get a list of the supplies, uh, that are purchased. Now, we used to have a director of facilities, and then we bid out the supplies. It seems like Aramark really has us, and we're looking at money and cutting programs, and I understand you have a very difficult job. You have to look... You have to look at everything, and some things have to be cut, and I get that. But when we start looking at bigger class sizes and cutting out education programs that make a difference in the lives of our children, I have to wonder if this outsourcing makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leslie Prokopick, and I live at 309 Rep. Road. And I'm here to talk about the programming at the high school that's been on the table to be cut. Yes, my last name's Prokopick, so I'm sure you all know that I'm related to Colleen, but I hope you won't question my credibility based on that. Along those same lines, I want to say that over the past 10 years or so, I've met so many people in this district that once they know my last name and who I'm related to, they go on and on and on about the Family and Consumer Science curriculum and what their kids have learned. Nutritional things, how to cook. They say their kids are eating things they never would have eaten at home. So I think that the benefit that these kids are receiving on an elective basis is very helpful to them after high school. It helps these kids be a little bit more well-rounded, which is what I think we're looking for in our electives. You know, not everything can be math, science, English, you know, our core curriculum. So the electives that we choose, they really need to help these kids be well-rounded, learn skills that they can carry with them after high school. On a personal note, I have a ninth grader who has a concussion, and one of the things that she's been required to do in therapy is sequencing, and that requires finding recipes, going shopping, cooking on a regular basis. So there are things that our kids can benefit from in these classes that we don't even know. And there are so many more stories out there with people and their personal ideals and what they've gained from their kids in these classes, whether it's cooking their dinners at home, helping the family out. There are so many benefits that these kids receive in that class, and I hope that you will consider keeping that curriculum for the benefit of all the kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nicole Lockridge, and I live at 132 Traywood Drive. I was senior at Plum High School, and for the last two years, I've chosen with Growing With Children to be my elective. Being because of this, I've enrolled at Penn State University for early childhood education. My first day in this class was me sitting down, and Ms. Marazo lecturing us about how the program would work, how we have to do calendars, how the activities would be taught to the children, and how things were going to go. Being a junior, that was kind of nerve-wracking because I didn't know how to teach. And I always see my teachers teach, but I think it's a different ballgame is when you're the teacher and you're teaching children, and you're responsible for what they learn and carry through kindergarten. So the seniors in my group, they helped me. They helped me to be confident, and then they helped me to learn how to be on topic. And they really taught me that there was no wrong way or wrong or right way to teach as long as you have the right information. And being a teacher, I learned through the experience of Growing With Children that there's no wrong or right ways to teach, and there's many ways to express teaching, like through your board or through the books or even through homework sometimes. And more and more I grew in the class, I learned how to teach in the ways that I felt was comfortable. And I don't really think in the high school you get that experience to really know what you want to do and to really actually do it. Growing With Children has gave me that experience to teach children, for me to be a teacher. In my senior project, I know how to do a job shadow, and I watched a teacher do it. And I watched many of teachers. I've been in school all my life. I've been in school 18 years of my life. And watching teachers teach is so different from actually being a teacher. And Growing With Children has taught me that. And yes, through my first time teaching, I was a little bit shaky. I really didn't, you know, know what activities they really liked or enjoyed, but watching the children grow and watching, like me interacting with the children and knowing what they like, knowing what catches their attention, learning how to control a classroom really has been a great experience. And in conclusion, when the children come to school, sometimes they're the only good person they have in their life to support, to love, and teach them things. A lot of kids come from different backgrounds, and being that positive spirit in them is what I love to teach myself. I'm more than blessed that I had an opportunity to teach Growing With Children for two years. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak on this behalf of this program, and I hope you guys don't cut it. God bless you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tom Grandy. I live at 1501 O Block Road. And I'm here in support of these students from Voice Campus Middle College. I think that you should definitely, if you have made up your mind, you need to really reconsider cutting this program. This program was put in place for kids that were in need and at risk. And when you look at some of the people that help these kids when they're in school, you have to look at it more from a personal standpoint, at least I do, because I've experienced it personally, and hopefully none of you have had the same experience. You know, when you have a child who doesn't want to go to school because he's been bullied or because he doesn't feel that he can accomplish anything at this high school, and you struggle two hours, hour and a half, every morning to try and get this student out of bed to get to school, and he winds up going to school maybe two days a week until he made it to BCMC, which your guidance counselor suggested that he go. He started BCMC about a week into this school year. Last year, if he went to school two days a week, that was tremendous. We felt some relief. This year, he started out the same way. He was recommended to BCMC. His mother and he visited BCMC. He liked and she liked what they saw. He started BCMC about a week or two into this school year. He has only missed five, maybe six days this whole year, none of it from not wanting to get out of bed to go to school. Tremendous difference in what we see in him. He has come back with three nine-week high honors. He is talking about college. He's excited about the forensic course he's taking and the psychology course he's taking. He's looking at those as potentials for college. If you take this school away from him, he's already told me, because I bluntly asked him, if the school goes away, if BCMC goes away because the school board decided they could save a couple hundred thousand dollars, what are you going to do next year? Are you going to go back to Plum? His reply was emphatic, absolutely not. I will never go back to that school. So if you do not reconsider reestablishing this line in the budget and allowing these kids the opportunity to grow and get an education other than through cyber school or whatever other means, you know, GEDs, they need the education, they need the socialization that comes with going to school, they need the one-on-one type of activity they get from the teachers at the school. And I think it would be very important that you really consider that. You know, what is the personal toll that would be taken? There are 17 students right now. What's going to happen to those 17 students if you pull the carpet out from under them? I would bet that most of them will attempt cyber school, and most of them, if you read all the statistics about cyber school, a lot of kids don't make it. So you'll be throwing money at a cyber school who will gladly take your money, but what kind of education are they going to give these kids? You know, we, as a district, you know, I've lived in this district for 40 years. My kids have gone to school here. My grandkids are in school here. And the district is a good district, but we can't continue to cut, cut, cut. I understand there's budget problems, there's contracts, you know, there's pension money that's got to be out there. But we always seem to look at cutting things, but at the same time, we're adding athletic fields, you know, we're updating, we're building a new school. And again, you know, I don't know all the ins and outs of that. I'm not privy to the information you have. But when you spend money on an athletic field, even if it's a practice field, which was listed in the paper the other day as getting started, would that money be better spent for these kids? Because they believe they're worth.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving me the chance to speak to the entire board. My name is Colleen Joyce, and I live at 410 Regency Drive. Thanks to the board members who responded to my email about the importance of the Voice Campus Middle College High School, and for those of you who took time to read it but did not have time to respond. I come before you this evening to once again ask that you consider the funding of the alternative high school. The cost is less than half of 1% of our total school budget, and we have 45 spots available to Plum. Students at Voice currently are only 33 attending. Dividing the cost by 45 spots reduces it to approximately $5,000 per student. We should encourage parents of children attending charter cyber schools to take a tour like I did, and they would find a great home for their students. But the decision you make, one that will affect these children for the rest of their lives, must be made with other factors in mind and not with just the cost. Without Voice, our daily attendance will drop, our AYP scores will drop, but most importantly, as we've seen with other schools such as Woodland Hills, that have left the program, our graduation rates will drop. The cost of abandoning Voice is truly unthinkable, and you have the power to give these students the chance to thrive and succeed that they don't otherwise have. You have this power to give our children a brighter future. Please use it wisely, and don't turn your backs on them. Show them that we really care about them. They are students. They are Plum Borough School District students. Please keep the alternative high school available for all of our students. Please stand up and be counted for them when it truly matters. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brian Noack. I'm a sophomore at Voice Campus High School. At Plum Middle School, I was bullied to a point where I would make myself sick or fake being sick because I was scared I was going to get made fun of or get hurt at school. My report card was filled with Ds and Fs, and my self-esteem was extremely low. When I started high school, I was still being bullied and having trouble focusing on my academics. One day, I got jumped by two people in the hallway, and from that point on, I was always looking over my shoulder, wondering if it was going to happen again. As a result, my grades continued to drop. When I got to 10th grade, I was still being picked on. However, at the beginning of the second nine weeks, I was interviewed by a teacher at BCMC. At the end of the interview, I was told I was accepted and now part of a family. Those words still stand to this day, and they always have, and they always will. After the first nine weeks was over at BCMC, my parents were afraid to open my report card because they thought they were going to see Ds and Fs. But when they did, they were the happiest I've ever seen them because my grades were Bs and Cs. I was able to get those grades because I have the support of the teachers and students at BCMC. We're all one big family that I am so proud to be a part of, and so will other kids as long as you maintain this program. I love this program and everyone in it. We take care of each other, we put smiles on each other's faces, and we are not going to let this family fall apart, not now, not ever, because we're worth it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kellyanne Hamilton, and I live at 122 Duquesne Boulevard, 15068. At the last meeting, I stood in front of all of you and stated that I was in 10th and 11th grade. However, as a result of my test scores and grades being so fantastic at BCMC, I am now officially a junior, and I will be graduating on time with college classes already on my transcript, unless the program is not in existence next year. I have not spoken to one Plum student at BCMC that wants to come back to Plum High School. Most of them flat-out said, "I'm dropping out." I'm frustrated and saddened when I hear that members of the school board are absolutely okay, we're shutting down a program that saves lives and offers educational opportunity for students that do not mold into the one size fits all public school. I'm not going to start a story saying that I was bullied back at Plum because I wasn't, but there are kids that were, and every single one of them found salvation at this school. We found friends that are just like us, teachers that understand us, and above all, we found a family. I came across a quote online the other night, and it said, "What if the cure for cancer is trapped inside the mind of someone who can't afford an education?" It's just like saying I couldn't make something of myself because I couldn't get into college. Without this program, I will not get into college, and I won't be the person I am supposed to be. Please take the words that we say to heart. I've never cared so much about education in my life, and I think I speak for all the kids when I say that. We're worth it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Samantha Merpice, and I live at 112 Carriage Drive, and I'm currently a junior at Voice Campus Middle College. I was given the opportunity to come to BCMC in the beginning of my 10th grade year. Being accepted in this program is one of the greatest opportunities I've received. When I first came here, my perspective on school changed immensely. When I was attending Plum, I never went to school, nor did I meet the academic expectations. Since I've been attending BCMC, I now realize that I love school, and also that I want to become a teacher after I graduate BCMC. Plum said yes to sending me to this program. I turned in an application, was interviewed, and then I got accepted into the BCMC family. I was nervous when I was starting my first day at a new school with new people. I wasn't sure what to expect. In my first period class, everyone wanted to get to know me, and I realized I was now part of the BCMC family. Since that day, I've learned to love school, and I never want to stop going and leave my BCMC family. My future is in your hands. Your decision of keeping BCMC open or not will affect my life forever, as well as all of my peers at BCMC. If Plum cannot participate in the program next year, I will not be returning back to Plum Senior High School. I will attend PA cyber or a charter school, even though these schools don't and won't compare to how BCMC has changed my life forever. What is the benefit of spending more money on sending me to PA cyber or a charter school of keeping BCMC open? I'd like to thank you for letting me speak tonight, and I hope you see what BCMC has done for so many people and what it can do for the future BCMC students. I'm worth it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Anna Yulianik, and I am a junior from the Plum Borough School District. I am attending Voice Campus Middle College. I quickly wanted to thank my family. Who is my family, you may ask? They are the teachers and students who have gathered here today to fight for our home. There are many who just could not make it today, but they are not considered any less of my family to me. I wanted to start out by thanking the school board for giving me and all of these students at BCMC a chance, our second chance to establish a better learning environment. Each and every one of us has a story for choosing BCMC as an alternative choice. Most of the people chose this school because they were bullied, their grades were low, or they just, or they did not want to be at their home school. My story is, I simply did not fit into just one clique. Plum's social life was highly based off cliques. You could only choose one, and you had to stick with them, or you could be excluded. High school is a time when you are beginning to discover yourself. I was meeting new people and making new friends. However, the clique I was a part of didn't like me getting involved with other people, so they chose to spread rumors to hurt me for not being a part of their clique. And that is how my story began. After all that had happened, and everyone had something to say behind my back, I was scared. I was scared to go to school, I was scared to talk to anyone, I was scared to go on a social networking site and see what new topic people had to say about me. Nevertheless, my life wasn't over. My friend was trying to get out of Penn Hills for personal reasons, and she heard about Voice. She quickly informed me about this school, and I did not hesitate to ask my mom. My mom was so against this school. She still is to this day. But when she heard about the opportunity of me taking college classes for free, she decided to consider Voice for her and my benefit. After the 2012 and 2013 school year, I will have a total of 22 college credits completed at CCAC. Most of my prerequisites will be completed, and I can continue on to university after my graduation. BCMC may just be an unneeded use of money for you, but... but to me, to all of the students and teachers here, it is more than that. It is our home, the place where we all know and accept each other, the place where we all fit in, and the place where we can succeed individually and as a family. We are worth it. Thank you.
Thank you. If I might note, we are on agenda topics right now, and most of the discussions have been on non-agenda items. So I will ask if there are any more discussion on agenda items. If not, now we'll move to non-agenda items. So, public comments on non-agenda items.
Hi, good evening. My name is Melanie Parenti. I live at 213 Blossom Court in New Kensington, 15068. One reason that I'm here this evening is in support of my daughter, who is a fifth-grade student government student at Pivot Elementary School. And I'd like to commend those students and their teachers for bringing the students here tonight to see how a school board meeting is run. They try to run their student government meetings after a school board meeting. So for the teachers to take their time out and for the students to want to be here this evening, I really give them credit for that. I also would like to say I'm very impressed by the Boys Campus Middle School students, and I'm sorry if I have the language wrong there, but by how well-spoken they are. I know they were speaking during agenda item time, but I was very impressed by the wording and the language that they used to express themselves this evening. So congratulations for standing up here and you speaking your feelings. I know that budget is very tight right now, and you have a lot of important things that you're trying to focus on. But one thing I want to bring to mind is about the clearances that are needed to chaperone field trips. I think it's very important that we have these clearances, especially in light of everything that has happened recently. I feel more secure knowing that my child is being chaperoned by a parent that has their criminal history checked, their fingerprinting done, and their child abuse clearance. One concern that I do have, however, is for the parents who are amazing members of our community, who have been involved in the P T A, but may not be able to afford the cost that is incurred by paying for these clearances on their own. Money is tight for many, many people right now. And when I added it up, the cost that I paid was fifty-three seventy-five. That was with a five-dollar cost for a money order that I had to get at S and T Bank because we could not send personal checks or cash. I have no problem getting those clearances. I've had to do it my entire life for jobs that I have had. But I feel that there are many parents who are being left out of participating in these field trips and programs with their children because they may not be able to afford to pay for a clearance for themselves or for two in their family. Like I said, I know that the money is tight. I know that you're looking at having to cut many things. I'm just wondering if there's anything that we can come up with to help make it affordable for these parents so that they can participate. I know my son had said, "Mommy, please make sure you can come on my field trip." And I'm sure there are other little boys and girls saying that, but may have parents who just can't do it for financial reasons. And I think it's really a shame if that's a reason holding them back. As I said before, I do agree. I think it's very important that we have these. I respect your decision. I know that we only have to have them every three years at this point. But if there's anything that we can do, maybe set up a fund, speak to the different schools and the P T As to see if there's a way to assist some of the parents who are financially strapped, I'd greatly appreciate it. Because I think, like I said, there are many people who are more than willing to be there for their children, but cannot. So thank you for giving me the time to speak this evening. I'd be happy to attend and sit in on any meetings that maybe this could be covered, and I just hope you would consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm John Carney. I live at 161 Spring River. First of all, I would like to tell you all that I am not a Plum student. I would also like you to know, by pulling out of this program, you would most likely be ending it for not just Plum students, but for Penn Hills and Gateway students. By ending this program, you will be placing children back in the very atmosphere they were trying to escape from due to bullying or lack of attention to their needs and many other people's needs. I myself have been fortunate enough to attend Boys Campus Middle College for my sophomore year. I have had the chance to meet some incredible people and the students and the faculty. I would like you to reconsider your proposal to end this program because we're worth it.
Thank you.
My name is Ashley Pipes. I live at 504 Ari Drive. I went to Gateway. Albert Einstein once said that everyone is a genius, but if you judge a fish on its ability to climb a tree, it will live its whole life believing that it is stupid. And B C M C has given the students an opportunity to escape that kind of environment. And my personal story is, it's not much different from everybody else's. I wasn't able to pass because the class size was so large you couldn't get any attention. But at B C M C, everyone's connected because everyone cares about each other. And large school districts work really well for some students, but for others, it just doesn't work. It's not the school districts' fault. It's just the way they were. We're worth it.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Karen Hamilton. I'm at 122 Duquesne Boulevard, New Kensington. My daughter goes to B C M C, and I just want to know, she is a junior. If this program is canceled, what will you do for these students? I mean, how are they going to succeed? They do not want to go back to the high school. They have had very bad experiences there. I know my daughter said she wasn't bullied, but actually, she was, and it was by a teacher. And also, my nephew was also, and my niece was also bullied by the same teacher. So if you put these kids back in the school, the high school, what are you going to do with them? When my middle daughter, who is twenty-eight now, went to your school, she was in an emotional support class, which she met, you know, during the school day, and that was a small area, a small room that you used in the school, which helped her get through high school. Without that program, she never would have gotten through, but she did. She graduated. But now, my daughter, you don't have that program. So I know you hired two psychologists. What are these two psychiatrists going to do for, what, five thousand, seven thousand students? Two. What are they going to do for these kids? You're going to have to put another program in place. These kids cannot do it without some kind of special help. But right now, they are succeeding in this program. This program is working. As you can tell, every student has come up here and told you the same story over and over again. And the Plum students have been very eloquent, extremely eloquent and passionate. But I want to know, if you do get rid of the program, what are you going to replace it with? What? I want to know. Think. Think before you cancel this program. Because it's going to cost you some money to get another program going, or these kids are going to be out on the street, lost. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Delaney Stewart. I live on 2218 Chapel Road Drive, and I am a senior at B C M C this year. As a senior, it is not directly affecting me, but the experiences I've had at B C M C and knowing all of my peers are going to be directly affected by the decisions to pretty much save money, but what about saving the students? We all have a reason we're here, to escape from what we were dealing with at our home schools. Personally, I got really sick. I got IBS, and I couldn't come to school. I stopped eating because of all the stress at Plum. I went to Boys. I've started gaining like the thirty pounds back that I've lost. And it's all from the help from the teachers. They help you through everything that you could ever ask for. They will stand next to you for an hour. Where at Plum? There's twenty other students that have the same exact questions that you have, and there's not the one-on-one contact and the intimacy that there is at Boys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Rob Patterson. I'm the director of B C M C, and I'm not going to take a lot of your time because you do have a full agenda. And I could not say it any better than what our students have said for you this evening. But I do want to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I just want to clarify a couple of items. I keep hearing the seventeen number being bantered around and in the newspaper in those types of areas. Plum Borough has currently thirty-three students that are attending B C M C. Plum Borough has forty-five slots available for Plum students. Let's say we don't touch anybody else in your high school right now. Ask yourself the question, how much are you paying for students going to cyber or charter school? I challenge you, give me those names, and let me see how many of them I can pull back onto your tax rolls. How many of them I can get back into, you're getting the state subsidy and not having to pay the ten thousand dollars per student? I challenge you to give me those names and give me an expectation number, a realistic number, that if I could do that, you will not pull the plug on these students that are in front of you this evening. Again, I ask that as a realistic type of situation. Basically, if you remove these students from the program, their options are going to be limited. They basically have said that they're not going to come back to Plum High School. And I've been involved in education a lot longer than maybe some of you sitting up there have been alive. But I will tell you this. Some of the things that I have learned over the years, things are never as bad as people say it is at Plum High School, or never as good as people say it is at B C M C. It's a program. It provides opportunities. And think how hard these students had to make that decision to leave their home district and to go, leave all of their friends, and attend another area where they may not know anybody. I want to compliment them because I think that's a heck of a job, a heck of a decision for a teenager to have to make, to leave their home district and to come here to B C M C. So again, I want to thank you here tonight. Also saw that Plum recognized many students this evening, and I think that was awesome because athletics are important, recognizing students' achievements are certainly things that we should be doing as teachers, administrators, and board members. While I'm here, I'm going to take the advantage of honoring one of our students. Bree Stone, will you please stand? This young lady stays after school on a regular basis to help not only Plum students, but the rest of our B C M C seniors that are having some issues to get them in position so that they can graduate. That is why we have a ninety-seven percent graduation rate. Again, I will challenge anybody to meet that particular rate. So Bree, thank you. Thank you very much on behalf of myself. Again, as you go through the budget process, I know it's a very difficult situation. I used to be a chief negotiator for teachers' union. I get it. I understand. You have X amount of dollars. How are you going to spend it? Please, this is the only program in your budget, your only line item in your budget, that you are striking the entire program from there. I respect Dr. Glasspool so much. I know that if we put our heads together, we could come up with something, even if it would be less than what you're right now participating in, to guarantee that these students will have an opportunity to graduate and to graduate with honors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional comments on non-agenda items? Okay, then, agenda, please.
Facilities Committee, Mr. Shane McMasters Chair. Recommend approval of following use of facilities applications as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to advertise for the following: Center Elementary Gym Lobby Roof Drain Repair, Center Elementary Gym Lobby Floor Repair, Old Pivot Sewer Line Repair.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to pay construction invoices as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept change orders number fifty-five through fifty-eight from Nello Construction totaling forty-one thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-seven cents as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to advertise for a request for proposal for baseball fence repair at Plum Senior High School.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The Facilities Committee, met on April sixteenth, two thousand thirteen. Mr. McMasters will make this report.
I have nothing additional to report. Thank you, Dr. Glasspool.
I would like to just comment. We've heard a couple of comments about some of the facility improvements that we're making with regard to educational expenses. These expenses for the practice field, the repairs that we have to do, these come out of a different fund. These come out of a capital improvement fund. This is money that was borrowed through bond issues to be used for construction and capital improvement within the school district. That money, by law, cannot be spent on our operating general expenses for education. They must be kept separate. So one of the things that we've been doing as part of our budget is we have been extracting from the operating budget these capital expenditures so that they do not increase our overall expenditures towards education, but can come out of a separate fund of money that has been borrowed specifically for these purposes. So even if we didn't build a practice field that we're talking about, that money cannot be used for education. That money has to be used for another capital expenditure.
Thank you. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand thirteen, at six P M in the high school boardroom. Personnel Committee, Mr. Sal Kellela Chair. Recommend approval to accept the resignation of Brianna Brown, social studies teacher at Plum High School, effective June seventh, two thousand thirteen.
I'll make that recommendation to the board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the retirement of Stephen Bobbick, custodian at Plum High School, effective May thirty-first, two thousand thirteen.
I'll make that recommendation to the board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the retirement of Warren Green, custodian at Plum High School, effective June first, two thousand thirteen.
I'll make that recommendation to the board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the resignation of Sarah Kaufman, bus aid retroactive to April fifth, two thousand thirteen.
I'll make that recommendation to the board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to amend the beginning date of maternity leave for Matty Venura, elementary instructional specialist at Adelaide Stevenson and Holiday Park Elementary Schools, to April 19, 2013.
I'll make that recommendation to the board.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the following unpaid leaves: Patricia Svinda, food service worker at O'Block Junior High School, retroactive to April 11 through April 30, 2013; Christine Guerrieri, food service worker at Adelaide Stevenson Elementary School, retroactive to April 26, 2013, through June 7, 2013.
I'll make those recommendations to the board.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the following leave in accordance with the Family Medical Leave Act. Michelle McIntyre, staff nurse at Holiday Park and Pivik Elementary School, retroactive to April 23, 2013, for a period not to exceed seven weeks.
I'll make that recommendation to the board.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend ratifying the collective bargaining agreement between the Plumborough School District and the Plumborough Paraprofessional Education and Support Professionals, PSEA NEA, for a one-year term commencing July 1, 2013, as attached.
I'll make that recommendation to the board.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just want to thank the paraprofessionals for fast-tracking this. It's mutually beneficial to both the school district and these folks and I appreciate all the hard work they did. Thank you.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the Act 93 agreement for a four-year term commencing July 1, 2013, through June 30, 2017, subject to approval of the solicitor as to form. This agreement supersedes the last year of the current Act 93 agreement.
I'll make that recommendation to the board.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I would like to note that this is really our administrative staff, our Act 93 employees, to me, taking a leadership role here in this negotiation. And with the Act 93, we have incorporated pay-for-performance type of salary structures where a significant portion of their future pay raises will be based on how well our students perform in the school district. This is a little bit ahead of the curve of what we have to do with our teachers' contract in the future on putting some type of performance-based evaluations into the contract for pay. So I would like to thank the administrators. This is an early bird. We've taken one year, they still had one year left in their existing contract, which they could have held us to, but they did work with us to bring this to a rather quickly conclusion. And I'm looking forward to seeing how well this works out for us and some lessons learned that we can use in future contracts.
I have to echo what Mr. Drake said. I also want to thank Dr. Glasspool and Dr. Rossi for helping formulate this. It's a great thing for the school district. It's a leadership role, you know, and that's what our mid-managers do. And we've got great, good managers. We all know our principals and administrative staff, so thank them very much. And there are some significant savings for the school district in this, so again, thank you.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Education committee, Mr. Joe Tomorella Chair, recommend approval of an overnight field trip request for the Science Olympia team and their sponsors, Dr. Bahamra and Mr. Jasper, from April 25 to April 26, 2013, at Juniata College.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of an E-signature resolution as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the voluntary informal disposition of student A as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The education committee, met on April 9, 2013. Mr. Tomorella, make this report.
Thank you. Just a few things to touch on. We had our health and our math review, curriculum reviews at this education committee meeting. I just want to thank the department chairs and the teachers that came out and showed us what they're teaching in the classrooms. We also had the Keystone results come in and they were pretty well. The high school did pretty well. Just to run down some numbers for you, these are proficiency levels, comparison between the high school and the state. For the Algebra I subject, the high school scored a 51% proficiency level and the state was 54% average. In the Language Arts Department, we scored a 72% compared to a 67% on the state level. And in Biology, we scored a 51% to a 42% at the state level. So good job to our high school staff and teachers and I know that we can improve on that and we will. And I also want to give a quick shout-out to the Plum TV Production Students. Their fourth annual Plum Penguins lip dub is out and I think, Mr. Barat, you're back there. I'm always proud of what we TV production students can put out there and fourth annual lip dub. It makes me feel old, I was in the first one. So congratulations to you students. I encourage the citizens of Plum to get on YouTube and check it out. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 7, at 6:00 PM in the high school boardroom. Finance committee, Mr. Kevin Daldel Chair, recommend approval of the treasures report and bill payments from March 2013 as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion. Second?
I have a motion and a discussion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Delinquent real estate taxes and fees collected by Angels and Price from March 2013, total amount collected, $82,523.11. Recommend approval to accept the April budget transfers as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion. Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to create an activity count for the Running Mustangs Elementary Distance Running Program, Jay Marston sponsor.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, this activity count, it's not going to be any cost to the district. It's basically a holding fund. There's going to be a small fee for the children that participates in this running program and that account is just like a holding bin for this account. And I would like to thank Mr. Marston for initiating this program. I think it'll be, I think the kids are excited about it and I think it'll be a healthy activity for the students. So again, I'd like to thank Mr. Marston for initiating this activity.
My sons are participating in this program, so I'll abstain from voting.
It's no cost to the district.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept a proposal from Halli Consulting Group for Gadsby 45 and other post-employment benefits valuation at a cost of $6,500 for fiscal years 2013-14 and 2014-15.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make this motion.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to close the 2001-2002 GOB account, Fund 24, located at First Commonwealth Bank. The account fund balance is $0.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the substitute daily hour wage rates for 2013-14 school year as attached.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend adoption of a resolution authorizing the incurring of non-electoral debt to refund the Plumborough School District's General Obligation Bonds, Series A of 2005, Series B of 2005, Series A of 2003, and Series B of 2003, and to finance a portion of the cost of the district's elementary school renovation construction project in studies, equipment, software, capital improvements, annual renovations to various district facilities as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, consolidating these bonds will save the district approximately a little more than $5 million over the life of refinancing bonds. Mr. Muscatello is here. If anybody has any questions for him, I don't know if there's anything that...
These are capital. This money can often be used for day-to-day operations and it's specifically earmarked for capital improvements.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The finance committee, met on April 2, 2013, and April 23, 2013. Mr. Daldel, make this report.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Muscatello and Mr. Pastel attended two of our finance board meetings to update us on the refinancing of the bonds that we just passed in May. The refinancing will be scheduled in mid-May and again, that will save the district a little over $5 million over the life of these bonds. Also, we took a look at the various capital maintenance and improvements we're going to be looking over the district over the next 10 years, to kind of come up with some estimated costs and what it's going to cost the district to maintain our facilities. And I think the estimated cost is somewhere around $10 million. And these are periodic improvements on the facilities and so forth. So we're looking at ways of financing those expenses. Also, Mr. Mertz attended our finance meeting. He is the district's independent auditor and he reviewed the highlights of the 2011-12 financial report and the management letter. He indicated that the ending fund balance is $3,370,500 and he reported an issue that the recording and disposition of capital items on this matter will be addressed by the district by placing barcode tags on assets. And there were no other major issues that were brought up by Mr. Mertz. We discussed the real estate collector's report for March and it shows that we have received 95.4% of the collectible amount. Additionally, we reviewed the EIT tax collections and year-to-date revenue and expenses and there were no concerns with those matters. As far as our budget, we discussed the preliminary draft of our general fund budget. Total reduction from March is approximately $1.1 million, using about $1 million from the budgetary reserve. This includes $500,000 from the unrestricted fund and $518,750 from the post-World War Capital Reserve Fund for repairs and capital expenditures. This leaves a shortfall in our budget of approximately $1 million and we will continue to find ways of balancing this budget for the preliminary budget in the end of May. Okay? I have...
Thank you.
I apologize, we're having a power failure on the computers.
The next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May 22, 2013, at 6:00 PM in the high school boardroom. Policy committee, Mr. Rich Zucco Chair, recommend approval of the following policies: electronic signatures, adoption of textbooks, resource materials, and field trips.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The policy committee, met on April 9, 2013. Mr. Zucco, make this report.
Dr. Glasspool, we don't have really anything spectacular or more to report at this time except that we will continue under the direction of Dr. Rossi to review these policies and any new ones that come up with a subject matter that needs immediate attention. That's all.
Thank you. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 7, 2013, following the education committee in the high school boardroom. Transportation committee, Mr. Tom McGuff Chair. The transportation committee did not meet this month. Athletic committee, Mr. John St. Leger Chair, recommend approval to hire the following coaches for the 2013-14 school year as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the following volunteer coaches as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation as well.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Food service and nutrition committee, Ms. Loretta White Chair. The food service and nutrition committee did not meet this month. Mrs. White will make this report.
Yes, Mrs. Lazaro asked that I make two announcements. The first is that Muffins with Mom is coming to all elementary schools on Friday, May 17, and Friday, May 24. And you should look for information to come home and also on the Plumborough School District website. The second announcement has to do with the charge accounts. It is time of the year to keep a close watch on your child's lunch account. Please pay all outstanding charges before the end of the school year. And she would like you to refer to the student handbook and also the new charge policy is on the school's website. Thank you.
Thank you. Forbes Road Career and Technology Center, Mr. John St. Leger Representative. There will be no report this evening. Eastern Area Schools, Ms. Loretta White Representative. Mrs. White will make this report.
Yes, at our last meeting, we approved a contract for sidewalk repair and replacement of two catch basements in the amount of $6,000. We also approved a five-year contract with Siemens at $6,000 a year in order for them to be able to check on the amount of energy savings that we achieve each year on the Act 39 projects that we had completed. Mr. Nicholas Fratto, Assistant Principal, gave the principal's report. The spaghetti dinner fundraiser raised $4,000 for student activities. Kennywood Day for Sunrise is May 15. The prom is May 10. Graduation is June 5. We will be graduating 10 seniors from Sunrise and none of them are from Plum. They're from the surrounding school districts. We have had no vandalism or major concerns with the building. The next meeting is May 23. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. White. Legislative Policy Council, Mr. Sal Colletta Representative. Mr. Colletta will make this report.
Thank you, Dr. Glasspool. Just two quick things.
The charter school funding still is in limbo. There's been no action in Harrisburg about that, but there has been action. House Bill 2, dealing with special education, was signed by Governor Corbett. Essentially, it establishes a commission of 15 folks to look at how special ed is funded in the state. And from the best I could see, it's about $1 billion a year, and that number has not changed for six years. So, hopefully, not for this year, but maybe for next year. That's all I have, Dr. Glass.
Thank you. Allegheny Intermediate Unit Number 3, Mr. Tom McGuff, Board Member. Mr. McGuff will make this report.
The Allegheny Intermediate Unit's annual convention was held earlier this month downtown, and it was a wonderful success. There were booths set up prior to the convention that each of the different work areas that the AIU oversees, there were booths that were explaining some of the projects, some of the divisions, some of the work areas. And students were recognized for student achievement, and that's always a great time. So, it was a wonderful success, and one of the important parts of the annual convention is each year, a certain number of the new board members are up for election. We have a 13-member board, and this year, there were five members that were up for reelection. And I want to thank my teammates here and my teammates on the AIU board. I was re-elected for another term, another three-year term. So, thank you, and look forward to serving the community and serving my teammates here on the AIU board again.
Congratulations, Tom.
Thank you. President's Report, Mr. Andrew Drake. Mr. Drake will make this report.
Thank you. Before I make my report, I'd like to thank all the BCMC students that were here. I know it takes a little bit of getting used to to come up and speak publicly about something, and you all did an outstanding job, and I appreciate you taking the time to come up here and let us understand your position on the decisions that we have to make. So, thank you very much. This past April was the National Month of Military Children, the School Library and Media Month, and Youth Sports Safety Month. Our staff is wrapping up our PSSA test administration and finalizing makeups. There were three weeks of testing in grades 3 through 8 in reading, math, and science. The PTA Reflections Program was held on April 10th. It was a wonderful demonstration of our community's commitments to arts education, and I would like to thank the PTA for their support and hosting of this event. On April 21st and 22nd, we inducted a new National Honor Society and distinguished alumni members, and we extend our congratulations to all our new inductees. In May, Teacher Appreciation Week is May 6th through 10th. May is also Teen Self-Esteem Month. Beginning May 1st, we have the Dibbles and Star Testing in the elementary grades. May 4th, we have the High School SAT tests. Beginning May 5th are the Advanced Placement Tests. May 8th is the Elementary Band Concert. Beginning May 13th are the High School Keystone Assessments. May 21st is Election Day. There's no school, but it is an in-service day. May 27th is Memorial Day, and there is no school. And as a reminder, in June, high school graduation is on June 5th. The last day of school is on June 6th, and the Plum-Kennywood Day is on June 11th. May is one of our busiest months of the school year, so if you need any additional information or need to go back and look at these dates, please visit our website for current events and activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's Report. Recommend approval to accept the Superintendent's Report, as submitted.
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
As an information item, open house dates for the 2013-14 school year. Adelaide Stevenson at Old Pivac, the ASOF Building, will be September 11th. September 12th will be all the other elementary schools. September 19th will be O'Blockt Junior High School. September 26th will be Plum Senior High School. One moment.
Our banker, now that you've passed a not-to-exceed bond issue, he would like some guidance as to what portion of that bond money you want to have him fund or sell bonds on, in terms of the new money. And if he wants to come up, he can tell you what it is. He needs some direction as to what he should be doing come next week.
Currently, on the current market, the refunding saves approximately $5 million. Under the current market conditions, the refinancing saves approximately $5 million after state reimbursement and after cost. And I've given you a list of costs broken down per series. If anybody has any questions, I can go over those if you'd like. So, in terms of the new money, I had run a couple of different scenarios. To borrow an additional $5 million and bring the total funds available for the school district for capital projects, to $10 million would cost the school district an additional $200,000 a year. And the majority of it, the way that it's set up, would be considered what we call wraparound, and the majority of the principal would be paid back in 2037. The other scenario that's shown is a $10 million borrowing, which would bring your total funds available to approximately $15 million, 10 new money plus the $5 million and the refinancing savings. And that would increase your annual debt service by approximately $400,000. And again, under this wraparound structure, you would make your principal payments of approximately $5 million in '37 and '38. And the reason they're made out in that year, that's when all your other bond issues are gone, so all the mills and all the debt service monies that you had allocated to the other series of bonds, that monies would be used to pay off the 2013D series. So, it's the cheapest way to, you know, the structure of financing. And with interest rates being that low, it may have been, it's probably the most prudent thing, I think, in my opinion, on how to structure this issue. To keep your mills as low as possible.
Now, the board, if they wish, they could make a decision tonight, but that would require a vote to instruct him which new money option you're going with. If you want to wait on it, you could schedule a special voting meeting as part of your Tuesday committee meeting, May 7th, which I...
May 7th would be fine, because at this point in working with Gene, we put the POS together and we sent it to the rating agency, and we used a higher number for approval, and also to the insurance company. So, anything less than that would be fine. So, we used the high, we used a not-to-exceed number, just because we wasn't sure what the board's desire, so we used a not-to-exceed number. So, we'll get the rating back sometime on May 10th, and we can let them know by the 7th.
And what is your drop-dead date?
Well, the 7th would be.
Okay.
So, one of the things that, you know, we had discussed at facilities and with our strategic plan was to collect a list of all of the long-term or all of the capital expenditures that the district has before them, that we've deferred over a period of time. And the administration went through and provided this list recently. Unfortunately, everything's in the timing, and it's taken us a while to get the list, and the bond issue has a date on it. You know, I've reviewed through the material, and just on the estimates that they have given us for the next three years, totals over $5.5 million of capital expenses that range from, you know, $150,000 of paving, of driveways and parking lots that we haven't done. And the last time we did it was in 2003, 2004. We keep putting that off to interior painting that we've done patchwork, but we have really put off doing interior painting. Last time we did a full-scale one at the high school was in 2003. Some of the other areas that we have expenses on, upcoming expenses that we know we have with the football field and the track. So, I agree, as we've been looking at this, you know, one of the, there's one of two options. One is, you know, we put it in the operating budget, which means for 2013-14, it's a little over $1 million if we were to tackle the items that have been identified as they've reached their estimated useful life and really need to have worked on them. 2014-15 is somewhere in the $2-plus-million range. So, the, you know, I think it is an opportunity for us to meet one of our long-term financial objectives from the facility side, is we've to put the plan in place to get our facilities back to where they should be, deal with, as we heard tonight, we have three repairs that we have to do that are not insignificant, and we have additional ones that are going to come due here over the next few years. So, I'm for, if the board is open for tonight, you know, going for the amount that we've, the not-to-exceed amount, I think we're going to need it all. I'd much rather have it under a much more favorable borrowing terms and set up future boards to have a sufficient capital fund where they're not drawing from their operating budget to deal with these issues on a year-to-year basis.
Now, there is a time concern in terms of how fast you need to spend the money, and it's usually, you can't, you should only finance projects that are three to five years out.
These are all with, well, five years, five years out at $7.5 million.
Just keep in mind that we still need $7 million to build a new building, so.
Is that without the 2.5? You know, we took 2.5 mil out of the budgetary reserve, and I thought that was going to be for the new building. Now, we're not doing that.
No, the estimate for New Holiday Park is $18 million. That's our conservative estimate now before going out to bids. I believe I sent information out to the board, the breakdown, so we, you know, still need an additional $7 million to build, to complete the new elementary school on top of Adelaide Stevenson on the O'Blockt campus.
And that does not include the 2.5?
No, it includes. It includes all of the capital funds that we have, you know, that amount minus the, I think its total's $11 million, and then the $7 million we borrowed gives us the $18 million we need to fund the project.
And so, now we're going to borrow an additional $10 million, right? Is that what we're saying?
Yes, that's, that would be the proposal. Given the, yes.
Okay.
Given the list of capital expenditures that we have, that were provided to us, of all the things that we have to do over the next, well, 10 years, I mean, just looking at the five-year plan to deal with those is a significant amount of money.
What Mr. Drake is talking about are things that, you know, cannot necessarily be considered preventative maintenance or items that we have currently accounted for in the budget. So, you know, this money, the capital funds, will be, can be used for some big-ticket items that we need, you know, in three years, you know, two years, five years, whatever it is, whatever the shelf life of some of our current, you know, infrastructure is in our facilities.
So, we're going to use some of that money for maintenance?
Well, again, it's not preventative maintenance. It can be considered capital improvements at that rate.
For example, you know every 10 years about the stadium turf has to be resurfaced. That's 300, and they estimate the last one was $315,000. That was done in 2010-11. So, in 2020-21, you're going to have to spend maybe another $300,000 to $400,000. So, if we don't set capital money aside now, or put money aside over the next 10 years, 10 years, well, less than 10 years from now, that board's going to have to come up with $400,000.
So, we're putting that money away now for 10 years from now?
Right. We can do, well, we can do it for five years, and we can defer some of it in our World War II fund we can set us off. So, it's just a matter of the timing on these issues versus the allowed money we have. The World War II fund doesn't have any restrictions on it, so that is one that you would want to draw from last, and you can leave that money there for the longer period of time. This funding, we'd have to draw from earlier, and that's why, you know, I look at just things that we have to do over the next three years. It's a significant amount of money. Future boards will have to do something with these items. We've put them off quite a bit. Some of them are well past their useful life. If you look at the file that was provided to the board, you know, we have things that have a useful life that we did, you know, five years, but they were really worked on seven years ago. So, now you're at risk that you may need to work on them here in the next couple of years.
Mr. Muscatello, can you give me some information on how much borrowing power we would have? I mean, after we borrow this $10 million, which is new money, I would like to know how much we, there is after that that we're allowed to borrow. I think you did once before, but I don't know if the $10 million was in on that.
No, I didn't include the $10 million, and I don't have that information here. I can get it for you tomorrow. That's in that Plumer Official Statement that we had put together. I can give it to you tomorrow.
Yeah, well, I realize you didn't know how much we were going to ask to borrow, so...
Yeah, it's, you're going to be, principal-wise, it's going to be in the $90 million range, I believe.
Okay, we owe $91 million, and, but, you know, you're well aware of the fact that we have a top, right? So, I'd like to know how much money we have left that we can possibly borrow.
Against your borrowing base? Yeah, I can get that for you tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
I agree with Andy, you know. I don't want to, these are reoccurring things that we could do with tax money. And to raise taxes, and we saw in the past what happens with that, there's enough stressors on our budget on a day-to-day, year-to-year basis that we can take this and alleviate this for a small cost of capital, $400,000 a year, looking out five years. It just makes more sense to me to look at the long term and say, these things are going to need funded whether we do them now or later, and that old thing, pay me now or pay me later. So, the reality is, you know, I think it's appropriate to borrow the additional $10 million to bring our total borrowing up to $15 million. So, I'd be willing to support that resolution.
I don't know if we will reach that $10 million, but that would be our not-to-exceed. And if I understand correctly, on these items that we, and I have to, you know, put together a round of applause for the team that put these things together, because this is a five-year plan, six-year plan, telling us the things that we have in the school district that we need to continue providing a good education. These are the buildings, these are the equipment, and if I, I just roughly count it, there's something like 90 different items here over the next 40, four to five years. So, I don't want people to think that these are something separate. Well, they are separate, but they're items separate from the educational process, but they're necessary, because they're actually our assets and our facilities. So, all the things that we spend money on, on a yearly basis, it would be like being in your own home. And these items would be the things that you don't count on, like a roof repair or a driveway repair, but basically, they still have to be done. So, that amount of financing may or may not come to fruition as a total, but I think it's definitely worth planning now, because I think some of the other boards did not do a good foresight, and they spent money a little carelessly, and now we have, we have maintenance factors on these schools that nobody considered. So, I think this five-year plan should be financed, and it will be a separate item. And I also think, I want to remind Loretta, I think out of that $2.5 million that we put into the post-war fund, didn't we already use most of that for capital expenditures this year, or in this year's budget? There's not $2...
Well, right now, we're looking at about $518,000, not most of it, but a portion of it. Out of the World War II fund.
That balance is $870,000.
For capital expenditures...
We took capital costs out.
Instead of using our fund balance for, you know, operating expenses, we took the, I'm sorry, instead of using our operating expenses for capital expenses, we're using the World War II fund, which was why we put the money in there to begin with.
That came out of the budgetary reserve, which is really our operating, supposed to be for operating expenses.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear. I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
No, I just said that we took the 2.5 out of our budgetary reserve, which was usually, sometimes we spend for operating expenses. We put that in the World War II fund.
We reallocated our, it's still, the World War II is still an operating reserve, it's just tagged to be for capital expenditures. And then there was money left for the operating, because in the past, a lot, and if you look at the previous budgets, like last year's budget, there's, you know, several hundred thousand dollars of capital expenditures that are in that bus budget, that, you know, in the long term, you know, that's driving your operating budget costs up. And if these are truly capital costs, it's more effective for the district to either have set that money aside on a yearly basis to build up a fund and then continue it as an ongoing basis, which we haven't done, or, in this case, to borrow the money to set up that fund, so that going forward, now, hopefully, what will happen, if you follow through with the strategic plan, is we're able to wipe out a large part of the debt that we have in all of these facilities that we've put off doing work on for the last three, four years when we've been balancing the budget. We've deferred buying buses, we've deferred paving, we've deferred some of the paintings and things like that. Eventually, we have to do it. You know, one of the things we have in there is, we'd like to put air conditioning at center. That's $450,000. If you don't have it here, you'd have to find room for it in your, in your general operating budget. So, it's still the same total bucket of money, it's just how we earmarked it for the expenses it should be allocated to, and then it's used for those expenses. So, we borrow the money, we actually have a list here we can go through and tag and say, this is the list of items that we're going to do with that money, and have our facilities department start planning to do this, and have that money in there, so that next year, they know there'll be funding available to start planning to paint the high school that needs to be done, or do one of the parking lots, or we can start the work on the center air conditioning system.
Well, just so we don't do all that at the expense of cutting programs. I mean, that's my only...
Right, this would be separate funding borrowed strictly to do capital expenditures, which in a way will help on the operating budget, because next year, none of this should be in the budget, in the operating budget, if it's funded under... in the operating budget, if it's funded under this here. I mean, it'll be in the budget, but the money will come from this source. Just like when we built PIVIC, you know, the new PIVIC, none of that money came out of the operating budget. It came from the bond money that we borrowed.
So, that was a debt service, which is a cost of the district. And, and I would only say, just as a tempering thought, and Joe, I say this with all due respect, we don't want to treat this like a college student with mom and dad's credit card, where we have this money and we've borrowed it, and now, we're looking for projects to, to kind of spend it on. And, and I just say that, just as a tempering thought, it's not a bad concept, but we just have to be careful to govern ourselves, that we not look at this as, "Hey, here's easy money that we can address." Because the bottom line is, we still pay. In fact, we'd be paying with a premium, because there would be, we would be paying for the privilege of getting this money.
And I think if you look at, this is not a wish list of things that they would like to do.
Oh, no, I understand. And, and that's why I say, I'm just, I'm just tempering the thought, you know, but, but this isn't like it's newfound money, because we'd have to pony up for this as well. And the debt service on this would, would be in each of those year's budgets going out for the next 20 years.
Yeah. I, I, I made the same question earlier in the week. And I don't know if you, if you got here late, did you see the whole list?
Glanced at it.
Okay.
Glanced at it.
Yeah, these are, these are not small items.
Frivolous.
And they're not frivolous.
No, and I sensed that, that it's not, it's not frivolous items.
It's not a wish list. It's a, here's what we need to maintain the safety and integrity of our buildings. We, we certainly wouldn't want our bleachers collapsing during a football game.
Certainly not.
Stuff like, I mean, that's in there.
No, no, one other thing, and, and I'm hearing this, but we have to understand that there is a timeframe on this as well, because we have to act, these are projects that are within the three to five years, correct?
Right, right.
In other words, you just can't hold on to this as an escrow fund that, you know, seven years from now, 10 years from now. We were talking about resurfacing the, the, the track. Okay, this money would not, would not do that.
Right, but we could, we could leave that, the money we need for the track in the World War II fund, and it would be there 10 years from now.
Gotcha.
Right, your, your, your obligation is to spend 85% of this bond issue, particularly the new money portion, on the new elementary school or other capital projects that would be completed by the end of the 215-16 fiscal year, of which you have quite a few earmarked that you project to do within that period.
Okay.
I think that, that answers your question.
It does, it most certainly does.
I'm glad you pointed that out.
And if you look at the list that I, I took Dr. Glasspool's list, I went through, my list is, is shorter, because I took out anything that was less than five years. Because to me, if it's less than five years, it's really not a capital, it's a recurring maintenance that you have to do, like, like the, the, just like your furnace. You know, you have to do your furnace, you, you bring somebody in and they charge you $99 or $150 to do that. But, the, the, the air compressor, your, your compressor unit's got, you know, 10 or 15-year lifetime. If you haven't put a little money aside in 15 years when your compressor blows, that, that's not an insignificant expense. That's like, that's a capital expenditure to you. You're either going to go borrow money for, or take it out of your savings account if you have one, or figure out how to do it if you don't have one, or be without air conditioning. So, this is, you know, when we put the strategic plan together, this was one of the ones we, we, we did with the facilities, and one of the tasks we gave them was, you know, go, go get us a list of everything without even talking about bond money or anything. It's just the two have sort of timing, the two have sort of merge. And when you, the list is significantly larger than I expected. But when I looked through it, I didn't see anything unexpected on there. I just did not understand the magnitude of-
The scope.
The scope of everything that the district had out that had, you know, this level of, of, I would say, lack of maintenance of, you know, when, when we did the work, so.
And, and the other, other thing is, it's a favorable, favorable market right now, so.
Right.
That's the other thing, you know, do we want to take advantage of the favorable market right now? As opposed, maybe wait in five years when it might be unfavorable? And then, you know, I mean, it, it's some type of risk, but, you know, things do look favorable right now.
Well, I'm just worried that we don't, you know, borrow so much that we don't have anything left. We're not able to borrow anymore in case some kind of an emergency happens. And that's why I would like Mr. Moscatello to tell me how much we have left, how much we're able to borrow after we do the 10 mil.
And so, I, I understand this sheet correctly, Mr. Moscatello. The, the debt service increase for this upcoming fiscal year, 13-14, would be negligible?
Yes.
Because of the debt we're paying off? And the, so, we wouldn't see that significant increase of $384, roughly, $1,000 until 15?
14, 15.
Okay.
I'd also like to make the comment, I agree with Loretta to a certain point here. But with what we've been planting, planning here, is that in the future, we shouldn't have to borrow that much more money, because we're going to have, our new PIVIC school is done. We're going to have our new Adley School, which is going to be called the New Holiday Park School. We're going to increase the activity at center by increasing maintenance, and we're going to put the air conditioning into that school. There's a lot of things that we were doing that I don't think we're going to have to build any new schools for a while. And this is kind of the, the buffer zone that's going to say, "Well, in the next three to five years, we really shouldn't have to borrow anymore. We shouldn't have to dip in. And if something does happen, like you said, an emergency, we either have insurance on it, or it's not, we've got the money set aside already for the next five years." So, our operating budget-
Where's the money set aside for the next five years?
Yeah.
Right there, that we borrowed, you mean?
Yeah. Okay. So, then, you know, we don't, we never have to really worry about taking money on a yearly basis out to pay for something that would affect, say, the educational areas. This is strictly facilities. So, I think it's a good idea. And I think the debt service over the year, I'd like to see, after we get our new Holiday Park built, and we have this bond issue done, I would like to see that we don't have to borrow anything for another five years, and just keep paying our debt service down and paying our total debt off, which is what I'm anticipating. Is that correct?
So, Joe, um, our debt service will come down about $5.5 to $6 million each year as we make payments. Is that correct?
Part of that's interest. So, the principal amount might be like $2, $2 million, $2.5 million.
Okay.
The rest of it would be interest. So, every year that, that you pay, you make a debt service payment.
Without borrowing anymore?
That goes back onto your borrowing base, right? You can re-borrow.
Okay.
So, in five years, we'd have, what, about $12 million then?
Right, and then, also, as your budget grows, the, the borrowing base calculation's based off your total revenues. That's roughly two and a half times your, your average of your last three years' total revenues.
Mm-hmm.
So, as your budget gets larger, you also have the ability to borrow more. I think right now, just a, a rough estimate, it's probably like $11 or $12 million that you could still borrow.
But that's non-electorial debt, right?
Is that all?
Non-electorial debt, exactly.
It's gotten a close?
So, if we elected to, you know, borrow the $10 million new money, we'd be right, we, we would be almost tapped out of our borrowing power.
I'll be at about $10 million.
Principal amount, you'd be close to $109 million. We're refinancing almost 60, we're refinancing about $57 million of your, of your debt, plus the new money. You would be probably, I want to check the number, but it's probably going to be like around $11 or $12 million, $13 million of additional borrowing capacity.
After the $10 million?
Yes.
Yeah, gotcha.
You know, and it doesn't seem to me that our revenues are going to be large enough to be able to sustain our operating budget from year to year. So, I don't know where that extra money's going to come from. That's my problem, too. You know, our, our budgetary reserve, how can we build it up?
Well, the problem, Loretta, is that if we don't take care of our buildings-
Yeah, I understand.
You know, we, it's like your house. If, if, eventually, it needs painted. Eventually, the roof needs done, the water tank goes. I, it's a cost of education. I mean, instead of just looking at our educational programs, we do have to have buildings to put people in. We have to have buses, we have to have parking lots, we have to have lights and bleachers and, I mean, I, I'm, you know, there's no other way to put it, except we always kind of look at an operating budget, like this building here doesn't cost anything, and we just go in there and we worry about how much it costs for the lights and the electric. But the roof needs repaired. We, I think we have, what do we have to replace? One of these curtains, and it has to be fireproof? That's like $30,000 for the stage? And we have to, I mean, it's got to be fireproof. You know, stuff like that. People just, we just don't seem to put, put enough emphasis. And we've been, everybody's been talking about, "Cut somewhere else, cut somewhere else." Well, you've, you know, you've cut painting, you've cut things like, say, caulking the windows or, or the doors, repairing the doors. Well, eventually, those things still have to be replaced. Whether you do it now or do it later, it's got to be done. And it gets so bad that it has to be done now. Well, not now, but, and, and some other things have to be done. We have a schedule for 13-14. Then, it's things that need done 14-15, 15-16, 16-17, and so forth, for five years. So, it doesn't all have to be done this first year. But the items that are really bad, we do first. So, I, I think, I think we have that responsibility. We have to take care of these things. People expect that of us to, you know, maintain everything, the integrity of the buildings. It's there, it's, this is Plumboro's buildings. It's not our buildings. We're just custodians, so. That's-
I guess education is a priority for me.